Welcome to the joint meeting of the Townsend Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee for April 21, 2016. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:10. Roll call vote of the selectmen.
Cindy King, President.
Wood and Clark, President.
Carolyn Smyth, President.
I'd like to call to order the Townsend Finance Committee for April 21. Roll call, Donald Klein, President.
Andrea Wood, President.
Cam Grant, President.
Madam Chair, President.
Marla Tiano, President.
Nancy Workso, President.
I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so 2.1, joint meeting with the Finance Committee to discuss FY '17 budget and warrant articles. Mr. Chair, would you like to go with the budget first or the warrant articles first?
We could do the warrant articles first. I think we'll get through that.
I'm not sure. Did you make a copy?
I did not make a copy of that yet.
It might be helpful for everybody if we want to see if we can make some copies.
So you want my own copy?
Jim had put together a sheet. I don't know if you had a chance to see it yet.
Yeah, he showed it to me the other day.
So it might be useful for all the members to... So we'll start with the special? Does that sound good, Don?
From the Finance Committee, we actually passed on Article 1. The reason being that we wanted to break down what this was for and who it was for.
And do we have that?
I don't have it this evening, but I did put the request in after we met two days ago. So I wasn't in yesterday, so Terry may have actually put it together, I've just not seen it yet, but you will have that by the end of the week, so tomorrow. Make sure you guys have that.
I'm not sure what the breakdown is. I knew a few months ago. I know one was built from last time's reading room, the other was Board of Health, I think. There's a few other ones.
But obviously, no one would support that if they didn't know what it was for.
That's correct. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of supplementing the town 210 police expense account for FY '16. We recommend that.
We haven't actually taken a vote on it, the selectmen. We did all agree. Do you want to take individual votes unless somebody has a question or just move through?
Madam Chair, if we could, I did speak with Selectman Clark about it, and there's some work that he and I need to do still between now and him casting votes, so I thought that on the 26th, which is still in time for town meeting to present, so you're scheduled, so if the board could defer on your votes until then, I can do what I need to do.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. That makes it easy.
Article 3, to see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $40,000 for the purpose of supplementing account 543, 544 Veterans Benefits Account for FY '16. Our board reviewed it and we're recommending it. Article 4, to see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate, or borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $4,303 for the purpose of supplementing account 610 Library Personnel Account for FY '16. We recommended that one.
Does my board have any questions or just pipe up?
This is the one that is strictly talking about the error that was made in the...
Yeah, the shortage in the library accounts.
Everybody should have put those...
Maybe we should explain that to the public as well.
You're dealing with every other page?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
135.
Oh, yeah. My missing page, too.
Take a brief recess while we fix that.
But anyway, this article.
Chairman, I move that we take a formative, as you want. Just keep going.
Yeah, we take the opportunity to explain this one.
Just on the article that Chairman Klein discussed for the public's knowledge, there was an error made in our budget that was approved for FY '16, and some of the personnel were not afforded their 2.5 percent increase for their salary, so this makes up for that amount.
Yeah, it's a pretty basic accounting issue, not to raise, I mean, we have to raise money.
It's not for raise, it's just...
It was already there, it was a math error in last year's budget when we were planning it, and it's just a matter of making it whole. There shouldn't be any issue, hopefully.
The only issue, I mean, maybe it's appropriate at this time, too, to let, I have the Finance Committee tell us, obviously, there's no tax levy left for FY '16, so we'll be using it out of free cash. Is that what the committee has agreed to?
That's what, I know that's what we were...
That was the recommendation.
I think that's what we need here. I think they told everybody was in agreement with doing that.
Yes.
Does it pay cash?
Well, there isn't any choice.
I know. I'm just checking.
There's no other money anywhere else. Well, we could transfer some from the budgets, but I'm comfortable using the free cash as well. It's easier to use budgets.
There's some insurance, but...
It's easier this way.
So we can wait till the rest of the Finance Committee gets a copy of the articles?
While we're waiting for that, Madam Chair, if I could, the most recent version that was emailed today of the budget, which is the twin to what the Board of Selectmen approved to forward off this past Tuesday night, there's one change that was made, and I detailed it in the second email that went out today. Each of the places where there was a salary, there's now going to be a notation that is either going to say "N-U" for non-union or "U" for union. There have been a lot of changes in the last even six months regarding who's union and who's not, and some of the question has been, well, how come some people see hours left in the budget, but others that you had said a week ago or two, we're going to get new hours in your proposed budget, don't? I had to back a lot of things off of my proposal because they're now union positions, and I don't have the ability to do that without a negotiation. So just to add another level of information for folks, you'll see those notations in parentheses after each salary by an item.
Thank you.
I did appreciate that, Jim. Makes it a little clearer for people, I think, to understand.
So I know our FinCom doesn't have Article 6, but it's to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $194,000 for the purpose of offsetting FY '15 and FY '16 snow and ice deficits under the provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31d, or take any other action in relation thereto. So I don't know. Not for it. And that, again, will be from a free cash.
Correct. The cover sheet that we just handed out does have the Funding SOT column, which indicates, at least in what I put forward, what the indication was for the source of funding, so you'd see free cash for that. One question that's come up in the last couple of days that we'll make certain to do is to, in the explanation document for each article, to make it clear that that's fiscal '15 and '16's snow and ice deficit. There are 237s, you remember, that we're carrying in addition to the 125 for this year. So just for clarity, to make people aware that the 194 isn't all this year, it's the last two years.
Does it say all of the...
The whole show.
The whole show. Get under it.
The board felt it was important to be...
Oh, no, I agree. That is a good thing.
Yeah, and just so that you're aware, that we did take a vote on this, and we are recommending that as well.
I think that's...
And have the Article 6...
Yes.
Thank you. Just a little late. Thank you.
Do you want to hold off? Do you have copies? Sam, I hate to continue on if you...
I know where we're at so far.
Okay, all right. So that sheet's working for you, then?
No, I just know where we are.
Okay, all right.
They give you...
You got it right here, but I've got an idea what's happening here so far. If I have any questions, fine, but I know, I did finally get a chance to read it when it came through from Dawn today.
Okay, good.
So we can go back to Article 5?
Article 7? Or go back to Article 5, sure.
Article 5 was to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Cable Receipt Reserve for appropriation the sum of $12,500 for the purpose of supplementing account 155 Management Information Systems Account for FY '16. We took a vote on this one, and we're recommending it.
Madam Chair, the spreadsheet, cheat sheet, if you will, actually incorrectly listed that as free cash, but Dawn's correct, that would be from Cable Receipt Reserve appropriation. So I'll make that change.
That's number 5.
And that's to supplement my contract to pay for our Hartley plus show, therefore all the work he's done the last two months for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so Article 7, Dawn, do you want to take that?
Yes. Article 7 was to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum $2,900 for the purpose of providing auditing services for the town's capital asset for the fiscal year ended 2015. We had a question on this, exactly what this was for. Can we be a little more detailed, because we're unaware of what was entailed.
Okay, so from what I understand, Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, when we switched to VADAR, it didn't have a capital asset reporting module in it. And the accountant had limited hours, and she wasn't able to keep up with the capital asset reporting. In order to complete our audit, we'd be hiring them to actually track our capital assets for FY '15. We don't have the module in the software, and I'm not sure if it's compatible with capital asset reporting. From what I understand, it's not. And that's on the new VADAR software that was purchased a few years ago. I had a brief conversation with the accountant. If you noticed, when we get into the budget, there's an increase in hours. If she thought she'd be capable of reporting the capital assets with the additional hours, and that's something that we might talk about for the future, but for right now, it's got to be tracked for the last few years. And that's what I know about it. I know it was very important to Terry, it has to be done for the auditors, and she doesn't have the software to do it.
How will he, they, how will the auditors track it?
With their accountant software, I'm assuming.
Yeah, they have software that would be able to do the reporting and do the tracking beyond what we have.
Yeah, but my question is even more basic, it's stupid, I guess. We send him information, he puts it into a system and then, or they hook into our system and they interact with the information. How's it work?
I do not know.
Oh, okay.
I believe there's going to be a lot of manual tracking and going through our assets and things, because we don't have a way for them to plug into our system and pull the data.
So what's the funding?
So the funding is to pay the auditors to do that.
Okay, so it's not strictly for software programs?
To do exactly what, though? I mean, I think that's where we're...
We're required to produce a report every year that details our capital assets.
Right.
We have not done that, because when we switched to VADAR, we no longer had the module that allowed us to do that.
Right.
It needs to be done. This is to pay our auditing firm to do that report for us.
$2,900.
Correct. The mechanics of how they do that, I'm not aware of.
Is there, do we know if there's a future benefit out of this money?
Having an updated...
Or is it $2,900 for one report?
It is the one report to bring us up to date, and it's, the future benefit is that we're up to date, and whether we...
Do we have a plan for future reports?
As Carolyn said, that's what's being discussed with Terry right now, and as you know, Terry's transitioning as well.
I know.
So it's a question of new staff coming in when Terry retires, and whether or not we have the additional ability through VADAR, even if we wanted to, to get a module with those capital assets tracking. So it's being reviewed.
What I understand with VADAR is it doesn't have that module, so we'd be looking at buying a new software program just for capital asset reporting, but I'm not, I'm not confident, but that's what I understood to be the issue. So our capital assets have not been reported correctly, I think, since FY '14, and that's when we switched over. So it's not just a simple matter of, you know, doing a report. They get all of that data.
Is it $2,900 for a one-time report or is it a multi-year report?
One time, which will cover multi-years, the past two.
Yeah, okay. And I'm just hoping that we have a plan...
It's to keep us up to date.
I mean, I'm just trying to publicize my question, not just because I'm asking a dumb question, but is $2,900 a reasonable amount for one report, or are we setting up...
For next year, next year.
For a more reasonable plan. Is 29 a good deal or a bad deal? For one report?
It's a needed deal.
Or is it because, I mean, we need it. I can buy into that. I completely buy into that. But for future report, do we have a plan? Is $2,900 a cheap number for a future report, too? Or do we have a plan that the 29, that it'll be less over the years if we have a better software plan? Do you know what I'm saying?
I do. I'll take it in pieces. Right now, it is the best option, the most reasonable option, because these are the auditors that we use that are familiar with us and can hit the ground running. It needs to be done. This is the best deal. Into the future, will we be paying $2,900 every year for this? No, we can't afford to do that. That's not a good use of our resources. So what Terry is looking at, as Carolyn indicated, is whether or not VADAR has a module that we can purchase, that we didn't originally purchase, through which this report can be generated. If the answer is yes, that's how we'll do it. You then have the capital expense of the module, but you don't have the ongoing operational expense of $2,900 or some number every year. If VADAR does not have a module that's compatible, is there another for which a bridge can be developed that we can use? Those are things that have not been looked at yet. Terry's been trying to close '15, so it hasn't been the level of priority for her, other than knowing in the back of her mind, we have to get this done, which is why she's got this ask on the table.
Which is, just part of my question is not to split hairs over the $2,900.
Right.
But to let the people know what the $2,900 represents for now, as well as future planning, that we do have a plan to move forward, that it's clearly is a software glitch, or possession glitch, not a glitch in software, but to move forward that we're looking at it, and what the costs are going to be over time, and what's a reasonable amount is all that really going to...
Understood.
And the positive news is that the accountants won't be able to transmit the data to whatever we end up using, whether it's a module for VADAR or whether it's its own capital reporting asset policy. That information can be bridged into the new, so, but the question is, is there enough hours for the accountant to be able to track it?
If all things upstream in the flow of data are functioning the way they should, they should be going to full time.
Yeah.
What the actual tool is to do it is going to be the question.
And she's researching that.
Is there a deadline, or a difference due against, say, state agencies, even if this isn't done yet? Are we waiting, progressing because of this? Or can we progress without it?
We will likely be found as a material weakness in this year's audit if we've not got it done. That wouldn't impact our ability for state grants, federal grants. It may, on a full-blown bonding review, our audit showing a material weakness could become an issue that could impact our bond rating.
It could have an effect on insurance, too. We don't know what our assets were.
That's why we need to get it done now.
Okay.
We don't want any material weaknesses. We do have to borrow money this year.
We do, but if we happen to stumble into one and know that we can correct it the following year, it's not as bad as just having one ongoing and ongoing that we've never come to grips with.
Any other questions on that, Dawn?
No, any other questions? Madam Chair, do you, would you like us, because there's only a few on here that need to have our vote? Would you mind if we go ahead and vote on those?
Please. Absolutely.
Do I have a motion to vote on this one?
A motion to recommend Article 7.
I have a second.
Next.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll come in.
All right, so Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $15,000 for the purpose of paying for the demolition and related costs of the residential structure at 5 Aquarius Lane and to authorize the lien to be placed upon the property for a full value of the work performed, or take any other action in relation thereto. Did you have a chance to vote on that one or discuss it?
Yes, we did. We are recommending this, and we felt that it was a public hazard, and so we're recommending that you, that we move forward with this one.
I know we're voting on Tuesday, but I feel confident in saying we're in agreement.
It's absolutely...
No other questions on that one? Should we give an explanation to the public? Would you like to do that?
Just for awareness, there's an abandoned piece of property at 5 Aquarius Lane. The bank has no intentions of making the necessary repairs. Roof is caved in from the pictures that I've seen, and it's become a public health hazard. So the town is going to put the money to have it torn down, and we'll place a lien on the property so that at whatever point the land is sold, we'll recoup our money from this.
Okay. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $20,000 to compensate a retired employee due to no fault of his own for losses related to an expired life insurance policy, or take any other action in relation thereto. I know we've talked about this in our meetings. Did you have a chance to talk about this?
Yes, we did. And we felt, as the discussions went with the board, in order to make the person whole through no fault of his own, that we're recommending that it to fund this article.
I appreciate that. I think we have a moral responsibility, if not a legal one. Have we discovered how we're going to set that funding up? Because that's kind of a tricky...
That'll be something for council.
Yeah.
It's, you know, from tax implications on down the line, there are things that need to be considered about how it's done. I mean, normally, those ones would not be received until there was a claim made against the life insurance policy. So very preliminarily, the idea is that they'd be held in escrow in an account likely held by council for the individual, and not accessed until, you know, until such time as a claim would have been made.
Are we going to be able to...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. Madam Chair, are we, I mean, town meetings are on the corner. Will we be able to have that...
Yes.
...plan for town council, to be able to present as part, even in the handouts?
Yes, I expect...
So that we have a plan?
Right, one thing we haven't...
Supposed to save some discussion on town meeting floor.
Right, one thing we haven't talked about tonight is the having an explanation for each article available as a handout, which will cut through some of the need to have that repetitive discussion. So yes, the plan would be to have that identified, that plan identified as a part of that document, as a handout for the town meeting.
Could it be part of the motion?
I would defer to council on that. I'm not certain how technical it's going to need to be.
Well, you also, also, I, in the motion, if you go for a specific company, if something happens, then you might have to do it again, because the motion would force you to use that specific company.
We're not buying a policy. We can't get somebody to write a policy for...
We're self-funding, because the company has...
Self-funding.
The reason we're doing this is the company has decided not to...
Oh, no, I understand that, but I thought we were just...
It's a council policy that...
I thought we were just buying a policy.
No.
He's not going to be able to be written again, so this is the actual cash value of the life insurance policy.
Oh, yes, I understood that. But I thought you could buy policies for things like that.
At this point, we don't want to, we're not looking to do that. It's just a matter of, in the event of, you know, the expectation that eventually that we'll have to pay it off, that the money is to go.
Oh, yeah.
So we're...
It's just when we're going to pay, and how.
So we're appropriating the money, and where's it going to be sitting after it's appropriated? I know you deferred to council, but...
Council has not responded back in detail about what that plan is. For the benefit of the individual, it needs to be off of our books. I gather there's some history that I'm not aware of, perhaps from trust issues, that weren't helped by this most recent issue with the policy being canceled. So the idea of the money being here, and then if and when a claim would be made relying on the town to make the payment, causes some anxiety. So finding some off-site mechanism where we...
I like an escrow.
An escrow, where we are assured that it's not going today, but will go once needed, and they're assured that there can't be any, you know, gamesmanship with different people some other year than the plan would have been today.
I understand that.
Madam Chair?
Please.
If I could just back up and to help our memories, but also to what the Finance Board, Mr. Crowley had a nice idea. He made the sheet that we're all using here tonight, but he had recommended that he was going to add a backup sheet to this, where the Finance Board or us, if we thought comments would help the people make the decisions, that he's going to produce that document. So maybe that's where we could do comments about, if the Finance Board or we had comments, we could give to Mr. Crowley for the meeting. Is that what your intention was?
Yeah, I'll take a crack at something and get it to everybody, and if people want to poke at it, let me know.
I think this allows more...
Philco will be there, too, now.
Right, but on different ones, if there's, if anyone had thoughts, some of we all have any thoughts, but I thought that was a great idea. The only reason I bring it up is that you folks weren't here, and you probably have lives here watching some TV. But, but, you know, it's an information, so I thought that was a great idea, so I guess we'll have that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $26,935 to supplement the FY '16 library operating budget, or take any other action in relation thereto. And that was submitted by the library trustees via petition.
We had a lengthy discussion with the library. It was my, our recommendation, okay, at my behest, was to make them feel good about this particular article. I didn't realize as I was going through it, because I had not read the articles for the annual, and there's another article that pertains to this there. It was my suggestion that they pulled the amount out last week and let Jim know, and then take no action on this on the floor once we got there. I was surprised when he'd had a conversation with Stacy, and that money wasn't pulled out. But I would think, and we haven't taken a vote on this, but it would be our recommendation, I believe, and I'll ask my members to vote, would be to take no action in this article.
We haven't had a discussion on this article. I know you've spoken with the library trustees. I don't know what that $26,000 represents, what they're asking for to be, because the $4,000 is to make them whole for their wages, so what would this be for?
This is for increased hours and I believe there's a salary increase of five, or no, it was just an hourly increase for two positions, the children, the assistant children's librarian and a couple other things. But this was supposed to go early on, right?
Yeah.
We're right at the end of the fiscal year now. So if we were to fund this now, they'd be really bucks up. It would seem to me that if they wanted to, if the town wanted to agree to increase the hours to that, you would do it from now until the end of the fiscal year, because this is for a whole fiscal year, from now until the end of the fiscal year. And the other article that Dawn talked about is for the same thing for next year, because she didn't put it into the budget for next year, because she didn't know who was going to pass this year, because we didn't have a special town meeting.
And to give them a salary increase would take a vote of the board of selectmen...
No, this is a petition.
That's the point, is this number can't be changed...
No, no, no.
Unless on the floor, so they couldn't have even if they'd wanted to, which I learned after that, because it was submitted by a petition with a specific number. Now, on the floor, to Andrea's point, somebody could make a motion that this number be, you know, two months' worth of whatever that expectation was.
Well, the other thing is with the selectmen, even if you appropriated the money, I thought the selectmen had the power to not pay out all the money. So if the money was appropriated, then you could only...
They're on a matrix, we can't put this...
Obviously, yeah.
Hours, yes, raises, no.
The petition article, so we have to, it has more power than most of us have.
I understand.
No, we, the hours, yes. The raises, no.
Okay. Okay.
Those have to be voted by us.
What I heard, they were looking just for additional hours for both the director, the children's director, and possibly the assistant children's director.
Correct.
Three, except, basically, two extremely important, you know, positions in this town. No offense intended to the board, but they're more important to me than you guys are.
We don't get paid though, Sam, so that's okay. We don't get paid, so that's okay.
Then you get paid too much.
Yeah, exactly.
Seriously.
Madam Chair, if I might, I have had a conversation both with Stacy and then with the current chair of the library trustees. When I spoke to them, it was with the, the question came up was, was the hours going to be recommended in the budget? As of right now, and I'll defer to Jim on it, but as of right now, in the budget that we're going to look at, those hours, increased hours are in there. So, my recommendation to the library trustees and Stacy was to take no action on this article when it comes up.
Including the five hours for the assistant children's?
The five hours for the assistant, Jim and I worked on that this week and those have been added back in, correct?
Okay.
We're talking about the difference between July 1st and May 1st.
Correct.
And this article would, as far as the 40 hours a week for Stacy and 36 hours a week for Molly would be, cannot be compensated in the new budget until the 1st of July, whereas we're trying to suggest, I mean, I would like to consider, in fact, while some of this money was originally input in there having to do with the $4,000, it's already been taken care of in a prior article, the remainder of the money needs to be considered in one way or another to cover the 40 hours from May 1st through July, June 30th.
And somebody...
Those are the hours I'm concerned about right now. And then the 40 hours for, and 36 hours from there on.
But the $4,000 that we spent...
That's cover a whole...
But that has nothing to do with increased hours.
Exactly.
Yes, that was just regular working hours.
Yeah, that was...
Okay, I just wasn't...
So, to Sam's point, somebody can move on the floor to amend this $26,000 down to whatever those hours would be for those three positions for two months.
See.
Then that affects what you're looking to do.
I'm concerned about the understanding of what...
The most important asset that that library has are the people that guide the youngsters, the old folks like me, as well as the youngest children. I've watched them, how they've handled, because I've got a younger, you know, 45-year-old that goes in there, we take her there because of them, not in spite of them. You know, because it's a library.
I think Sam's, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Sam, but I think Sam's statements are a good example of what can happen on the top floor.
Sure.
And the article's there, it has to be there because it's a petition. We can't vote, there's none of us that can vote to change the article prior to the meeting. It has to be standing there. And when any of us, including, it can be the entire library staff, can stand up in unison, all the selectmen can be on the same page, all the FinComs can be on the same page and we can say, we want to move along on this because we came to an agreement. We have to be clear about what that agreement is because this is a petition.
Sure.
A petition is a citizen's petition. It's not ours, it's not the library trustees, it's not the employees, it's not even the patrons. It's people that may have never set foot in the library. They signed a petition and they're expecting $26,000, they see this. And we all know that a lot of people come to town meeting and they don't quite, they don't know about these meetings that we have, on how we negotiate things. So, my only concern is that we're prepared and that we have an absolute good, all parties' explanation of what is, if there's a negotiation, or how we want to address this money. That if we all agree that we're giving it to them, but just in a different way, that we're able to explain that to the average person that comes to town meeting and says, I don't understand, there's an article, it's a petition, why are we not getting it? Who's decided to pass it over?
For the library trustees.
Oh, we can't pass it over.
No, but I mean, whoever makes the motion to do something with it...
Even if it's petition, somebody can move to pass it over.
Any one of us or...
The only thing a petition gets is...
I know. But we all know that weird articles, which I'm going to call this a weird article, I just want to make sure that if we have a packet, that, or whoever speaks to it, we've got, somebody's got to have to speak to this.
No.
Somebody's got to make a motion.
Yeah, the dad's got the library trustees.
The petitioner has to make a motion.
I get it, yeah.
Yeah.
I get that, but we...
There can be a document that we've already talked about that has an explanation.
But somebody can also make this $26,000 real.
Oh, absolutely.
Sure.
And we have to be prepared.
Yeah.
So, and that's what I'm addressing, not, oh, we can do this. I know we can do, I know we can have all kinds of motions, but I also want us to be prepared to comment to your average citizen that walks in a town meeting and hasn't listened to any of this, doesn't read any of the documents, and says, I want the $26,000 to live.
Correct.
And then people start wanting it. I just want to make sure that we're able to address it to the people that walk in a town meeting that haven't even turned on a television or, oh my goodness, Facebook.
And that becomes, and that becomes a leadership perspective from...
We have to work, but all of us.
The committee, the board, the trustees, unified, saying, now, I think Don and I share the thought that, my understanding from the trustees was going to be that they were going to advocate that this be passed over because those very hours that this would seek to cover are in the article that follows. So...
I followed what, the next year though.
Correct, so they...
Well, they're still, they're still...
Understood.
You know, we've got six to the year left.
I understand that.
Of 16, and that's what we're talking about as far as just these funds. Maybe we should suggest that it be more spelled out, maybe even nailed down more, you know, like they need X dollars for the extra 40, you have the eight hours, the X dollars for the extra six hours or whatever they are. And those are the dollars that cover that month, just like the $4,000 beginning, covers a shortfall in accounting. And go back to them and say, spit this out and what are the other couple of dollars you need? And my impression was that the $4,000 has doubled up here in the early article and the second one. That's my understanding of what I heard told to me, this is hearsay, so I'm not going to live on it. And my suggestion is to find out what can we do to pay the director, the children's director, and the children's tech the money they deserve.
For the balance of the year.
For the balance of 2017.
And that's why you're saying it's an example. He's a good example of not quite hearing everything, but he's got the fear and he's hearing from the community and he's, and it's not just Sam, he's on the finance committee. And I'm not, I'm not going after Sam, but I mean, he's a good example of not quite sure.
Well, to me, this is a petition article, they have to defend it, they have to discuss it, they have to talk about it on town meeting. We just have to decide whether we support it as a petition article or not, that's it. The first case scenario, if the $26,935 is appropriated, they're not going to use all of it because there's only two months left, so it's just going to be part of our free cash number. So, I don't think we need to...
Whoa, they could appropriate, we voted, they could spend it.
In two months?
Yeah.
And to personnel wages?
Uh, sure. They certainly can.
But it doesn't say, depending on how the article, the motion is done, it doesn't say exactly in here. I would say myself...
It just says operating budget, doesn't specify personnel, so they could...
I would say that this isn't a very...
Yeah, they could buy books with it for $26,000. Actually, is that a problem since they want it for personnel?
I'm not saying that they do.
It would have to be specified, I would imagine, as an amendment.
They'd have to put X amount in personnel services and X amount in operating budget. So, is their article, you know, it's up to them to defend it or just take no action?
Correct. And from our perspective, we can't touch anything that's here, so the rec, so we would have to vote to either recommend or not recommend at this point.
I'm just saying that we're clear about it. I'm not saying that, I don't want anybody to think that I'm defending a robbery or I'm defending a particular course of action by anyone. I'm just saying we need to be, I mean, I understand, I completely understand what we're talking about, what we think is the appropriate thing. I understand what the FinComs talked to the library about and that everybody's in agreement. But I think it's very important that the people that come to town meeting understand that also, and that they're willing to go along with the agreements that have been made and that we're clear, all parties are clear about what that agreement is and that it's okay, there's $26,000 that looks like it's being left on the floor, but it's really not.
Right.
It's old money that would have been valid in December, but it's no longer needed anymore.
From my perspective, in my conversations, both with Stacy and with the chairman of the library trustees, they were happy with what is coming up in the budget. I, it is my belief that they are going to take no action on this article. But, again, Jim, I think had the same conversation. But from the FinComs' perspective, we need to vote on whether or not we recommend or not recommend this article as it stands. So, I need to have somebody from the committee make a motion.
Do you want me to do that?
Which...
He's not staring at you.
Somebody, really.
You're doing so well, love.
Well, I make a motion to recommend Article 10.
To recommend or not recommend?
To recommend.
I'll say to recommend.
Do it positive because that's much easier to vote, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of recommending the articles that stand, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
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 Uh-oh.
I didn't catch who...
I noted aye.
He goes two to four.
No, I still have questions.
She and I are no.
Okay, so, four no's, so the, we're not recommending the article.
Aye.
Okay. And that concludes the special, oh, we have one more.
It's council and aging.
Yeah, you want to take that, Don?
"To see if the town will vote to raise or appropriate or borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury for the purpose of supplementing FY16 council and aging budget." We passed over on this because there's no money there. We don't know what we're voting on.
I don't know either.
Give me a dollar.
I, I, this one, this article came up on the special town meeting that never came to life. And I talked to Mr. Sheen about this. When I was a selectman, we'd have petitioned articles and council said that, and both of them are lacking in this respect, that a petition article is supposed to explain the needs for the money, what they wanted to use it for exactly. And if the article doesn't meet the criteria, then they can't even make a motion. To me, there's, there's nothing to vote here. I don't think the petitioners, now Andy said that you could submit, that the petitioners could submit an amount, but that's a significant change. Just a regular, without the petition, you can't, according to what town meeting time, you can't raise an appropriation significantly and from nothing to whatever is going to be a significant raise. I was hoping, because I know a number of people had talked to them, to say, we'll just give it up and just submit a regular article instead of a petitioned article, but for some reason, they were determined to do it by petition.
Well, once a petition is submitted, that's it.
But they can withdraw, they can withdraw their own petition.
The petitioners have to withdraw.
Yeah, that's what I said.
I signed a petition and nobody asked me to withdraw.
But see, that's another reason why you can't put...
It's like a petition, I know, I shouldn't have signed it in the first place.
Oh, no.
Well, I was a candidate, anyway. But, I was a candidate, I was a selectman. But no, but my concern is, is there not any money for this article?
There is no money on the warrant.
Not specified, but there are funds available on the...
There are funds available to put there. Is that, that's my question. Are the money, it's free cash?
If it's legally allowed to be amended on the floor...
There's money allowed.
Which Andrea just spoken about, though. I'm not certain that that's the case, that somebody can amend, because Town Meeting Time does say you can't significantly alter an appropriation upward.
Well, 10 minutes ago, you said I couldn't change the other article, petition article, to just cover the last two years or the last two months.
So, I think to get back on track, we're looking exactly at the petition article as it stands.
As it stands.
And there's no money there, so, so if you guys want to take a vote.
There's no...
I'm going to ask.
There's no money there.
No, we can't, I just want to be clear, we can't add any action.
Take the fight or take the vote. I've heard, I've heard both.
Finance committee's taking the vote.
But Andrea just said that she's been advised recently that you can't.
I make a motion to...
For what? Article 11.
Article 11 to...
Not recommend.
Not recommend.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, not recommend.
Opposed? So, we're not recommending that.
Just as a point of information, Madam Chair, I'm not clear that under Town Meeting Time, which is different than Roberts, which I'm more familiar with admittedly, that you can't amend a motion once made with no dollar figure to a motion with a dollar figure. I have seen under Roberts where someone will have an article that says, to see if the town will appropriate a sum or sums of money for the purpose of XYZ. And it is allowed then as a part of the motion to have a number put in. Andrea's indicated that Andy advised under Town Meeting Time that you can't do that.
No, no, I misspoke that way.
Okay.
I, from past experience, learned that you couldn't do that. You couldn't raise it. He's, Andy told me that they could put it in a sum in by motion.
Okay, I've seen, I've seen a writing from council since I've been here in the file on that point, from Town Council, saying that the petitioners can add a dollar figure on the floor. So, again, under Town Meeting Time, I don't know that that does or doesn't work, but I have seen that.
I don't understand how...
All right, okay, all right, hold on, just a minute. Why don't we do this? Why don't you talk to the moderator and council combined so that you have a clear understanding and then if anything's changed, you can let the finance committee know and they can, they can address it by next Thursday. Because I think it's important for, and the public too, to know between the moderator and the attorney, what is possible.
But it's also to us if we're going to, I mean, I mean, I support the finance committee's importance, but we also need to vote.
Yes.
But all you know right now is an unknown number.
We have an unknown, yeah, so, I mean, I'd like, I mean, I certainly would like to know from council whether or not...
So, we're going to take care of that then, right, Jim?
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay, Don, you want to start with the annual warrant? Have you taken any votes on these?
Article, I, just to move over, yeah, we did. But Article 1, 2, and 3, we normally do not take a vote on these.
Not financial.
Yeah, they're not financial, so...
And just so folks know, there, we stick a vote every year, once for the James Tucker Fund, the others to hear any reports from the boards or committees, and the first one is to appoint all your town officers by accordance of Massachusetts general law, so it's just standard. So, Article 4 is a finance?
Yes, Article 4 is to see if the town will vote to continue to authorize the revolving funds for certain town departments under the Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half for FY 2017, beginning July 1, with a specific receipts credited to each fund for the purpose for which each fund may be spent. The amount, annual expenditures shall not exceed any entity authorized to expend from the fund as outlined in the following table. We didn't take a vote on this for some reason.
West towns in reading rooms.
We had, that was one, we had a problem also with this. Afterwards, I realized, constructed this way, I don't know if we can vote, because we have a conflict with the Board of Health, we have a conflict with cemetery, we have fire EMS.
And animal care.
And animal care, yeah.
We can't...
We could stick the selectmen's vote into that one, but that, will that work? I mean, this is standard, it's done every year.
Oh, I know.
But in order for the FinCom to vote, just so that people understand, for the FinCom to vote, we have three members that either have family members or are a member of certain committees that are on here. Being that said, we cannot vote on those individual line items.
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman, can I make a recommendation here?
We have a full board, we're in 10 years.
Your guidance, the three, all, well, on your second sheet that you're going to create, can we just put a notation that the FinCom is abstaining from voting on this?
Yeah.
Does that make sense, folks? Because we'll be a half hour explaining why not, just say FinCom's abstaining.
Or ask council if, if we could vote on it in just a general sense, everybody supports the ongoing funds, if you, you know.
In this climate, I suggest caution is better.
But I think it's, I think it's very important to let people know exactly what that conflict is, which is not a bad thing.
I'll take a crack, because it shows people abiding by...
It's openness, there's, nobody's hiding anything.
But that was my goal, just to make it easy.
Well, to make things easy, but hiding things.
Nobody's hiding, nobody's hiding anything, so let's not try and say that.
Actually, putting on a piece of paper is gonna be more transparent, just to put abstaining and the following reasons.
No, it's not. Okay. So, with Article 4, there's some conflicts with the FinCon members, the same as the board has some conflicts with the town clerk's budget and the police department's budget. So, as long as people are aware of that, I think it's fine.
That'll be specified in the document that lists an explanation per article.
That'd be fine. Is that reasonable, Don? Do you agree with that?
I do. I've... Is that all, the rest of them? That's fine?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Article 5. To see if the town...
Is that the operating budget?
It is.
Can we pass over that one then?
Sure.
Because they'll take that and hold after.
You want to take it after the whole warrant's done? Okay. So, go ahead, do you want to continue, Don?
Article 6, to see if the town will appropriate, raise or appropriate, borrow, and transfer from available funds in the treasury to the sum of $109,000 to create a reserve for negotiated contract settlements and salary adjustment funds for the union and non-union employees. We did not take a vote on this last week because this was a different number than we originally had.
Madam Chair, I can address this for everybody. I did with Don in our meeting earlier this week. In the original version of this document, that number was $85,000. And when the second to the last, or the last draft version of the budget was being reviewed by the select board, it was brought to my attention correctly that the increase in hours and potential for reclassification in land use could not be incorporated in the budget because that's a union position now. That was one of the ones that I missed when I culled out all of the increases. There were several hours that were left in, the town accountants, as an example, non-union, you know, warranted. Land use could not be there. So, there was a chunk of money, some $23,000, in that line that was showing as an adjustment. Not because that person was going to be getting $23,000 additional dollars, because they used to get money from other lines that they were no longer going to get. But that line itself, that amount of money in the earlier version of your budget, could not be there. Had to be pulled out. But the chance that it's negotiated to be implemented and that there's a reclassification that is warranted, the funding would need to exist, so it was put into the bucket article, this next article. So, the operating budget went down, the bucket went up.
And that's a classic example of conflict. I wouldn't be able to vote on that article as well, because technically, this 2.5% in there, right?
Some unknown percentage, yes.
Well, I'm not union.
Understood.
Is there any other questions from my board? So, we need to take a...
But aren't we back at the same thing again? If it's salaries of loved ones and close family members or the members themselves, in Barry's case, we again are right there.
My goodness.
Technically, I can't. Yes.
Okay, who can vote? Why don't we do this, folks? Why don't we do this? Why don't we take a joint vote of the board and of the FinCon of available people without conflicts? And that'll stand as a vote.
Okay.
Because I think that will sort of make a quorum.
Who can vote?
So, there, we got four and four on.
Oh.
So, that'll be a standing vote.
I'm gonna do something, I can.
Okay. I think that'll work.
Okay.
How does that work?
We're joined.
We can specify again in the explanation that this is...
That's my only point of explaining.
This is an effort at giving guidance and leadership in also being aware of the...
Nobody's trying to hide any... I mean, it's just, this is how it is.
So, what do we have? A vote of what to what?
I've got a question about this. The $109,000, right?
Yes, sir.
We're still on that number?
Yes, sir.
So, we're telling all the unions out there to say, it's $109,000 for them to dig into?
No.
So, what are we telling who?
Go ahead, Jim.
Technically, yes. You are saying to all employees that there's an amount of money in a bucket that is available for negotiations. What it's not saying is, please come take it. What it's saying is, if you negotiate and you give things at the table that are very important to the town, there's a potential to fund it. The unfortunate thing that I've seen done before, Sam, is people budgeting raises in the individual department's budget, that's, to me, very much like going to buy a car, sitting with the finance guy at the dealership and showing him your bank statement and then trying to negotiate. So, I've never liked doing it that way. Additionally, some towns don't appropriate anything, and then they try to negotiate at the table, which I think is a bad faith move, because I would be negotiating without the ability to actually affect the deal that I strike. So, this here, it puts carrot out there, definitely. But there's no guarantee you get it unless a deal is ultimately done.
Jim, how many unions are you talking?
Oh, dealing with police, fire, telecommunications, and supervisors. So, four unions and then everybody else that's non-union.
Not union. This includes so many people.
Yeah, this is all the increases.
That if one union... If one union gets greedy and decides to negotiate in one particular matter, this is Townsend, that you don't want one unit to take all the money.
Well, it's still, the contract is still before town.
Let's go... All right, all right. Let's go one at a time, because it just, and people can't hear or understand what we're saying, so go ahead. Who had the floor?
No, I just said, even if, not that they would do that, but even if they did take advantage of the situation, still has to be voted by the town, so, you know, there's always that safeguard.
And also the board, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
But also, negotiations are exactly that. And so that we, the board, our duties with the assistance of our town administrator is to protect the interests but also be fair. So, that's through collective bargaining. And then the town will be the final say. So, this is a process that's been thought out to be successful based upon past experience. So, I think it's a good plan.
Did you want to say something, Sam?
When do we come back to vote? The town vote on the contracts?
We don't.
They don't.
We don't.
Under this scenario, the town meeting is authorizing the charter delegated chief executive negotiating body.
To bend up to, we're not exceeding such...
To negotiate townwide, every employee something out of this bucket.
At the same time, if they're taking this, they're gonna give back that.
I would, in my experience, most definitely. I've not experienced how these folks negotiate, but that's, yeah, that's the deal.
Over time... I find this to be a little bit more transparent in a sense, because saying a department head needs to budget for his union, the police chief needs to budget for the police union, how is he gonna do that if there's no negotiation or contract in place? So, at least it allows for negotiation by putting everybody's increases in there. It's fair across the...
I guess, you know, as a private citizen, okay, I don't know where our median incomes day is for the people who pay the bills, which in a lot of cases includes, people are getting the money as well, because they're residents of the same town that they work in. But the economy has pretty well tanked in '07 and has been slowly growing to the point where nobody's afraid of losing their job, but nobody's gotten a raise either. So, I mean, if we're continuing, and there's also the concept in the general public mind that, you know, in 1975, when I got out of the Navy, they'd get a, take your GS exam, you know, once you get a job with the government, you don't have to work again. And you're guaranteed for life. That's a broad brush, you know, a six-hit brush to paint a small picture, but nonetheless. And I get... As we're moving forward and asking eventually for more money, eventually, somebody's gonna come down the road and say, you're gonna have to pay for that school out there. And that's gonna hurt. And so, I'm just concerned that, you know, as we go forward, everybody's on the same playing field. Those who work for the Daralite, those who work down in Pittsburgh or Boston are on the same playing field as those who work for the town of Townsend.
And that's something we've been very committed to, because I've actually asked for cost per employee, because we have a very generous healthcare package. So, you know, that's gonna be something that he's gonna take into effect when he's negotiating the different contracts and as a whole package deal versus just salaries.
And toward that end, Sam, I think it's an important time in Townsend's history right now for bargaining, because under health insurance, as Carolyn said, the town plan's a very generous plan. However, it can't just be changed. There are specific things that have happened in Townsend more than other places where you must negotiate to conclusion those changes. Let's say that one union decides not to play, doesn't want to negotiate, holds their breath, crosses their arms. We will not only have to have the same expense, which is roughly 14% of the town's operating budget goes to health insurance. But at the end of next fiscal year, if we've not negotiated a change, we're gonna be hit with a penalty from the federal government because our plan...
I know those are weird.
Right? So, there's another 80, 90,000 right there. So, we can get hung up on the fact that there's $109,000 here and it's not in the taxpayer generally's best interest, but the taxpayer's gonna get hammered significantly harder if we don't change health insurance, and we need some carrot in order to incent that.
Wish to, for myself and my fellow citizens here, know that as we're moving forward, you know, the raises that they're getting is equal to their neighbors in, you know, Groton and Pepperell and Lundenberg, et cetera, and actually out here, you know, that we're all moving forward in the same direction.
And Carolyn's point, though, it's not as easy as looking just at the dollar or the percentage raised, because if they're giving back $20 a week in health benefits, actual cash on the table, and they're getting, you know, 20 in salary, they got nothing. So, it's not just about looking at the wage, it's the total picture.
It's the total package. So, real quick, Cindy was next, I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask, go back to Mr. Klans, we could get the vote.
Yeah, I know, but they had another question.
Yeah, my comment is just, I mean, I hear where Cindy's coming from again, but what we've done for years is that selectmen have the authority to negotiate the contracts. We have the authority to sign contracts. Even if we don't have the money, we've done it. And then tried to figure out the money after the contract's signed. This year, we're doing things a little bit differently, and there's a dollar number out there. Now, it doesn't say where the doll... There's different parts of the contract, like we said, healthcare, there's salary, there's all these things. So, the townspeople are able to see what that number is, because we've been panicked for the last year, where's our money? Now, all of a sudden, oh, we've got money? It's confusing. But we do have the authority, whether people like it or not, we do have the authority to sign these contracts and we're going to do it. But the money is just visible.
We can address that.
It's visible, but it's visible. That's my only point, is that it's not meaning we're gonna spend it all. So, let's move on.
Can I get my comment in, please?
Yes.
Thank you. What we used to do, and I know, I hate when people say that, but here we are, we take like the $109,000 figure out of some, and you leave that in free cash. You negotiate your unions, and then you take it to a special town meeting. Because if you buy the first year, you bought three years.
Absolutely.
And this way, you automatically buy three years without any choice. I particularly don't like this, that's all.
And to respond to that, if I could, Madam Chair, I don't want to try and move on, but the difficulty, Andrea, that I have found is when you negotiate a contract with the union and it's all still subject to a special town meeting, if one is to be held, when it's to be held, depending on who's in the room and their mood that night, you don't get the deal that you get if you could actually say, we have the money right here. It's on the table if you do this deal. We can be more aggressive, get a better deal for the taxpayer, if we've got the ability to say, it's done if you say yes. Now, I understand, once you buy year one, you buy years two and three, and that becomes incumbent upon these three to be mindful of the fact that there can't be, you know, a balloon on the end of this deal that's gonna choke the taxpayer. We know that education next year is not gonna be as easy for us as it is this year.
The unions always go for the big balloon at the beginning, because then they get the most overall. They absolutely want that to end.
That's gonna be all part of successful negotiations. So, and the $109,000 just doesn't encompass the unions.
It's everybody, every employee.
Oh, yes, but people will have it.
So, to follow your train of thought, and then we'll move on, is that if we wait, negotiate the contracts, then go back in the fall to get free cash, we have to retroactive the payment. This way, they're not having to wait once the deal is made. It's on the table, and you're gonna be funding the non-union people July 1 anyway, so it makes it fair and equitable.
If I were a union negotiator on the union side, you have $109,000 here. I take my calculator out and I figure we have, I'm just guessing this, 15 town employees at 2.5%. Ah, this much of the money is committed, and this is much what's left for me to go for. To hell with the other two unions, I'm going for this. They are not stupid people, you know?
But in that respect, Andrea, they're also aware of how much free cash that we have available and what our revenues are. So, it really doesn't matter if it's already appropriated or sitting in available funds. They're not stupid, they're gonna know.
No, they're gonna know, but you have a better chance of keeping them down, I think.
I think that's just a different...
And this is wonderful. I like this one.
I apologize.
So, I agree, Mr. Chair. Let's move on, but this is awesome, because this is exactly, having this practice run at debates, right here in this room, where there's only a handful of us, is great, because we get to hear ourselves. And if we can't, if we're debating now, the townspeople that are trying to figure out what we're talking about, if we have this now, this is great, because we get to practice.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Just so that I'm clear on how we're gonna attack this vote, because there's a number of us here that cannot vote on this particular article. I will request the members from my board that can vote to make their vote known, and I assume that you will do the same, correct?
And I think that'll work well. I think that'll... So, please, you first.
Hey, we're gonna hold off on our vote. So, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you, I'm just...
Well, not on this issue.
You guys can...
Not on this issue.
Well, can we please just go one at a time here, so we can get some stuff done, please? Yes, I'm just asking. So, are we gonna hold off on all our votes?
No, no, not on this one.
Again, I'm asking Chairman...
No, not on this one, Gordon, because you and I have gone...
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, let's...
Because on this one, you can't anyway.
Again, I'm just trying to be slow and cautious and not overstep everyone.
Everybody one at a time. I think that's really important, to be respectful of everybody when they're speaking. So, Don, please, go ahead.
Okay. For, can I have, since Andrea, can you make the motion to recommend or not recommend? I would say recommend this.
Recommend the...
Article 6.
The sum of $109,000 be put into a reserve account for contract negotiation settlements.
Either, or, second.
So, Don, this is going to encompass a vote with Cindy in it?
Okay.
Okay.
All those in favor of recommend, the recommendation of the $109,000, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? The ayes have it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to move on to Article seven, Mr. Chair?
Do you mind reading this one?
Oh, do you need some water?
Yes.
Article seven, "To see if the town will vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended and as appropriated in this warrant, or take any other action in relation thereto." And this is a standard article for elected officials, and I think the only one that it affects is the town clerk.
And the motion will actually include the six hundred dollars longevity, I believe it is, that needs to be called out separately, per town council last year.
Yep, it'd be the same motion as last year.
Uh, we did, did we?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, we did, we recommended this one.
Could we go back to six for a second, just?
No.
A second?
No.
Who seconded the motion?
Oh, okay, you can go back that way.
Here you go, beady. Thank you. I'm not getting a ride home tonight, you know.
I'll still give you a ride.
I know.
Article eight.
In the Trump.
Yeah, under the tire.
On the roof. "See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury, the sum of blank, to supplement the FY17 library operating budget, or take any other action in relation thereto." Again, this was submitted by an elected board, the trustees.
Correct, and Madam Chair, my understanding, from my discussion with a member of the Board of Trustees and the library directors, that they will move to pass over this if, this is the catch, if the hours that are contained in the operating budget, Article five, pass. If they don't pass, they reserve the right to take it up again here.
Okay.
Which, they would have to put a number in at that point, yeah.
They'll probably have a motion prepared for themselves and just.
Well, it's probably right around the twenty, well, two and a half.
All right, one person.
As with Jim, I also had a conversation on this article yesterday, yesterday or day before yesterday, about the same thing, and that was their intention. If their request was built into the budget, which it has been at this point, they were gonna take no action on this article.
Okay.
We did not make a vote on this article.
Okay.
So I would look to one of the members to make a motion to not recommend, would you say?
I. Can make a motion affirmative and then vote against or no.
Yeah.
Make a motion to recommend Article seven.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
No?
No.
Three noes?
Three noes.
Three noes, two yeses, who are you?
No.
Four noes and two yeses?
That's enough.
One line, I'll go for it. Those are the eight.
Okay, um, do you wanna deal with the water department budget with the other budget? Do you wanna pass on that?
Yes, we could.
Okay, so let's go on to the capital finance articles. Article ten, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury, the sum of a hundred thousand dollars for paying off debt incurred related to the FY16 roadway improvements, or take any other action in relation thereto."
And we did take a vote on this one, and we are recommending it.
Thank you.
Oh, I had, I meant, we needed more information. I wasn't sure what this meant.
Okay, so, if you recall, Andrea, we did approve, two years ago now, I think, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for pothole repair to match away from the state, and we actually borrowed that instead of appropriating it. We did pay fifty thousand dollars off on that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this would pay the remainder. It was a short-term note, if we don't pay it off, we're gonna have to roll it into a long-term by December. So, for such a small debt with the free cash that we have available, I think it's important to try and get as much off the books as possible. So I'm glad Finkham agreed. So, Article eleven, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury, the sum of a hundred thousand for the purpose of roadway improvements, or take any other action in relation thereto."
Again, we took a vote on this one, and we are recommending this one.
Great, and that would be an extra, just for some background for folks, is Ed had, Ed Coop, our highway superintendent, had repeatedly sent in a request for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to capital plan, the selectmen a few years back, before my time, said, "Really shouldn't be a capital expenditure, it should be budgetary." We agreed with that. The idea, after the meeting of the minds, of putting it in an article is, is he can save it from year to year to bring it forward, versus it just going back into free cash. So, that's the way we've been doing it. Even the borrowing, it was kept within the article.
For highway improvement?
Yes.
Did that go into anything coming from Boston?
Well, you do have your chapter ninety money that.
I know about that, I only know about it, I don't know what it is.
No, there's no pothole program like there was a few years ago, is that what you're thinking of Sam?
Highway anything. Does anything come from Boston to help us fix the road?
Yes, four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars this coming year, in chapter ninety funds, to which this one hundred will be added to get us a little over half million.
Yeah, actually, our chapter ninety went up from last year. So the Baker administration's really working hard.
They can't drive into New Hampshire without asking the question, we can only afford a mile and a half on thirteen, yet as soon as you hit New Hampshire on thirteen, it's paved all the way to almost to Milford. When you hit one twenty-three over here, after you leave West Townsend, it's paved all the way to, it hits thirty-one.
But you gotta remember, Sam, that was a Band-Aid. The state has agreed to repair thirteen, and it's on the tip list. They haven't moved the tip list up, it keeps being pushed back. Because the road was in such a serious shape, the town agreed to appropriate some money to put a Band-Aid on it. So that's the reason that it's like that, the state is gonna be coming in, grinding down, doing new drainage systems and things like that, and repaving it. So you don't wanna throw good money after bad, you don't wanna invest the town's money in it when the state's gonna be paying for it.
I'm just looking forward to the state taking care of some responsibilities, like bringing the roads up, parallel to the states around it, or the states well-sout of here, I don't care what you're talking about, whether it's Virginia or North Carolina, Maryland, Delaware, I go through all of them, Pennsylvania, well, Pennsylvania, they start taking it up, but then they don't finish it for another six years.
Okay, great, so that was a recommend, right, Dawn?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, what, when we want, Article?
Eleven.
Madam Chair, I just lost track.
Article twelve, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury, the sum of a hundred thousand for the purpose of paying off debt incurred related to the FY16 capital plan borrowing, or take any other action in relation thereto."
And we did take a vote on this one, and we are recommending it.
Good, so just so folks know, we had a capital borrowing that was about six hundred and twenty-two thousand from a few years ago, we've been doing short-term notes, so before we roll it into a long-term, five-year note, we will be paying down a hundred thousand of it, which will bring it down to five hundred and three thousand dollars. And we'll probably roll that maybe with the land purchase as well. Okay, Article thirteen, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account, the sum of twelve thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing state-mandated IV pumps for the Fire EMS department, or take any other action in relation thereto."
Yes, Madam Chair, and our board took a vote on this after a meeting with the Fire EMS chief, and we are recommending this. Also, as a side note, I do, am a member of the capital appropriations committee, we have reviewed this with the fire chief, and the capital committee, and I apologize, I forgot the letter that we put together, but we are recommending this from a capital perspective.
Good, I think I can get everybody on board.
Thank you.
So Finkham and Capital will say yes.
And just also note that Article thirteen and Article, the next one, Article fourteen, that I did not participate in the vote, because my son is a member of the department.
This discourages you for you. Article fourteen, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from the ambulance receipt reserved for appropriation account, the sum of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing leasing, or purchasing a new ambulance for the Fire EMS department, or take any other action in relation thereto." And this would be the same, Finkham and Capital approved that. Now, I personally haven't talked to Chief Boynton, was that a three-year lease deal like we were doing before, Dawn?
Three at sixty-three and changing years, what Terry and the fire chief talked about.
And that's just gonna be, so folks know, it's taken out of ambulance receipts money, so it's not tax dollars as well, literally play the vehicle over there that's needed, so.
Yeah, we understood that, and from a finance perspective, we voted recommending this. We did have a long conversation with the chief, with the capital, and we pointed out the benefits to him of the leasing versus buying it outright, as far as not wanting to draw down that account to almost nothing.
That's great, thank you, Dawn. All right, Article fifteen, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from Water Enterprise Return Earnings Account, the sum of forty thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing and upgrading the Wichita Brook Pump Station Number One, or take any other action in relation thereto."
Madam Chair, we did.
It wasn't either one we had.
No, this one was.
Yeah, these just came in.
There was more capital articles.
Oh, yeah, and those were the ones for on there.
Yeah.
So we have not, from a finance perspective, taken a vote on this. I can tell you that the water superintendent did come before the capital committee, with a number of articles that are coming up here, and we did recommend this from a capital perspective.
Well, I know we were gonna wait till the fall to do the capital plan itself, Dawn, but the selectmen did take a vote as an emergency, from what we understood, capital agreed it would be an emergency to go on to this warrant, is that correct?
Correct.
So just so folks know, that was Article fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, are all coming from Water Enterprise Return Earnings Account for various capital projects. Did you wanna take a vote from Finkham, or discuss it with them at the meeting, it's up to you?
I'll defer to my members, do you want further discussion on this, or do you prefer to take a vote tonight?
I think we should take a vote here.
Okay.
I don't have it.
Okay.
Bless you.
Are you voting all four at the same time? Can we do all four at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna do all four.
Yeah, I know. Yes, we are. Here we go.
I don't think you got, we're gonna do all four.
Yeah. Vote that we recommend Articles fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Great. Article nineteen, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury, the sum of four thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the assessors FY17 periodic inspections and property data verification program as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Bureau of Local Assessments, or take any other action in relation thereto." Did I just read something recently, that they only have to do it every five years now?
If you did, I've not read it, and I haven't been advised by Vicki, so.
Not that I have a problem with it, but it's sworn, I just, one of our updates, but I don't know, have you had a chance to?
We, this is something that usually comes up every year, and we took our vote, and we recommended it.
Okay.
I wasn't aware that there was any kind of a change.
Maybe the next Tuesday, Madam Chair, just check.
Yeah, look, I just remember, you know, the two AM, reading my DSL updates, something about that. So any other questions on that article? Article twenty, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury, the sum of seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars for the purpose of providing funds for MIMA hazard mitigation planning grants for emergency generators, which shall be reimbursed at seventy-five percent, or take any other action in relation thereto."
Madam Chair, that number is going to be a revised number, since the finance committee has had the document. The original number we had in there was fifty-six thousand, two fifty-two, that, it turns out, was from one of the generators, but the grant was being sought for, so the total amount is that figure that you just read, of seventy-eight thousand, one nineteen, and that'd be two generators, and then seventy-five percent of that amount will be reimbursed to the town on successful completion of the project.
Would you please say the sum again?
Seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, we did not vote on this, because we had heard there was two generators, and the articles that we presented with it only included one for what we assumed was a mobile generator.
Correct.
So, and I know I've had a conversation, so I still have a question, I know you and I spoke about this, that there's a possibility we can still put that other generator in Atwood?
Madam Chair, through you, yes, the question has been whether or not public funds can be utilized to benefit a private property, and the simple answer would be, no, you can't under the Constitution, but there is a carve-out in the Constitution of Massachusetts that would allow you to use public tax dollars for a private purpose if you have a written agreement, and the place you're putting the money is providing a service that the municipality or state might otherwise be required to supply themselves. So an argument could be made that Atwood Acres provides affordable elderly housing, which is something that would normally be covered by a housing authority, and in this case, the housing authority doesn't have to have the expense of that, because Atwood's doing it, therefore, you write an agreement that says, "In return for your provision of this service, we provide this benefit." So, it can be done, legally it needs to be structured, in order to pass muster with the Constitution, but obviously, if this is appropriated, and it's determined that that can't be done, then the money doesn't get spent.
Yeah, just sits there and gets, goes back to the free cash.
Where do you benefit from these generators?
One of them, as I understand it, and this grant predates my involvement, one of them is a mobile generator, so for town purposes, if there's another ice storm, and there's a need to have an additional shelter someplace, or, you know, we have a, you know, pump station that needs generator capacity that it doesn't have, we have that mobile generator. Additionally, there was a generator contemplated for Atwood Acres, you have a population there that would not as readily be able to move to another consolidated shelter, if we were ever in that situation again. Long-term, definitely, it's difficult, but even short-term, it's, the disruption for particularly that population is difficult, this would provide the ability to stay in place and have power in the case of an emergency.
It's hard to kind of imagine being out of power from anywhere for a week or more.
Unless you're in a unit.
At our home, do we plan on a week or more?
Just so that people are aware, this all started with the ice storm.
Yes, this is ice storm stuff.
Since I was the fire chief at the time, and the problem we ran into was a lot of the elderly did not want to live Atwood. We brought small mobile generators over there to run, try to run the building, most we could run was their activity room. So everybody in the building literally had to come to the activity room to keep warm. So this generator would supply whatever they needed for the building, in order for them to shelter in place. The mobile generator for, is for, we've had a number of other generators go down during the ice storm, I know fires, one of the fire stations went down, I believe this generator went down too. That mobile generator will allow team to bring it wherever it is needed while the other generator is being repaired.
I agree, I mean, I would support this because of the ice storm, but it's not even that, the elderly, they have a lot of special needs, so to transport them to the shelters is even difficult, so it's helpful to keep them right there. So you voted yes?
We have not voted on this one.
Oh, 'cause the dollar changed, that's right.
Correct.
Okay.
Make motion to recommend Article one. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We recommend it.
Great, Article twenty-one, "To see if the town will vote to rescind ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars of the appropriation under Article twenty-three of the annual town meeting held on May sixth, two thousand and fourteen, or take any other action in relation thereto." And this is just a cleanup, basically, there was debt authorized in a higher amount, so this just reflects the amount that was actually needed. Some of the projects were cheaper than originally anticipated, or they received use, so this is just to clean everything up.
Madam Chair, we did recommend this one.
Great. Article twenty-two, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury, the sum of five thousand dollars for the purpose of supplementing the Conservation Commission's land fund, or take any other action in relation thereto."
We took no vote, we passed them, just 'cause there was a number of questions, and I don't recall, did you have a question was on this?
A couple, it was just, their, their piece of property in mind was just going to, just, I said that I thought it was just going to into a fund to build up, to buy a piece of land, if and when something they wanted came along. We just didn't know anything about it at all, and so we were curious.
And I can tell you that I inherited the article in the folder, so when I opened up the folder that existed for coming town meetings, this article was in there.
Yeah, as near as I, as near as I know, Andrea, I believe it's every week, they, I mean, every week, every year, they try and put some, and they'll.
That was my impression as well.
So this is for future purchases, if they?
Yeah, and we'll have Jim confirm it for you, just 'cause I don't want you to vote on something that's not absolute, but that was my understanding.
Haven't they pulled it off the last couple of years, too?
They passed it off, they, yeah.
We've been waiting till the fall till we had free cash before they do it, but this is, it's on the annual this year, so. And it would be coming from free cash, so. But if you wanna wait for Jim to confirm exactly, before you take a vote, that would be.
Do you wanna wait, or do you wanna take a vote?
No.
No. Can I get an open moment?
Recommend Article twenty-two, two. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to recommend Article twenty-two, for the sum of five thousand dollars, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We'll still get you the information, Andrea.
Oh, no, that's okay, I want the information, but I just don't.
We're pretty sure it builds up, it's nice either way.
Yeah, well, I, I.
Okay. Oh, that's fine. Article twenty-three, "To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and three-quarters, in order to establish a separate revenue account to be known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, into which will be deposited funds received in connection with the franchise agreement between the town's cable operator and the town, and from which money shall only be appropriated for cable-related expenses. for cable-related expenses consistent with the franchise agreement, including but not limited to, one, support of public education or governmental access cable television services, two, monitoring compliance of the cable operator with the franchise agreement, or three, preparing for renewal of the franchise license, or take any other action in relation there too.
Because this is not a money article, this is not one that we normally would vote on, so.
Good, because I have to ask you to repeat that in English.
Oh, I thought we had voted aye because it would set up the account that we're charging for.
So, I could have not read that, then. Do you vote on article twenty-four, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I can do that one. Article twenty-four is to see if the town will vote to appropriate by transferring one hundred and thirty thousand from the cable receipt reserve for appropriation into the PEG Access Cable and Cable Related Fund. We did take a vote on this one and we did recommend.
Want to take article twenty-five?
Article twenty-five is to see if the town will vote to transfer from the PEG Access Cable Related Fund, the sum of one hundred and thirty thousand for the PEG Access and Cable Related Expenses. We did recommend this and assuming between the two articles, one is to accept the cash in and the other one is to pay the expenses going out.
Correct.
Okay, that's what we thought, so we did, yes, we did recommend that.
That might be confusing at town meeting, but it should be simple to explain. So, next we have is the stabilization articles. Article twenty-six is to transfer money into regular stabilization and article twenty-seven is to transfer money into the capital stabilization. And we have not, as a board, had a discussion what that amount might look like or if we're going to pass over it. Did the FinCom have any thoughts on that?
We did not take any because there was no number given to us. Now that Jim and I have had a discussion of what possibly this might be.
What's some thoughts out there?
Madam Chair, I mean, I threw those on there just because it's something I'm familiar with. At the end of all the financial articles, if there's some money sitting there, does the town want to put it in a place that's hard to get to, which means it's likely to last longer, or leave it on the table? I think one of the points that Don made that I think was a valuable point to consider is we expect that there's going to be some free cash available at the end of this night, depending on how things go, and it might be best that that be left as free cash until at least after a special sometime in the fall when we have a better sense for what comes up between now and then. You know, you can put it in stabilization in May, if you need it in the fall, it's a two-thirds vote to get it out versus leave it as free cash and that's a majority vote to, to be able to use it, so.
I have no problem doing that with, with regular stabilization, but very soon, the selectmen are going to have to get together with capital planning and set a budget for you for the capital plan that you're working on. How historically we'd do it is money would be transferred into the capital stabilization, we'd be able to set the budget, so when the capital plan goes to the town meeting, you transfer the money on stabilization to pay for that capital. Currently, there's about $291,000 in capital stabilization that could be used for a future plan. I would really like, if, if the FinCom wants to discuss it next week, considering putting another $100,000 in there. I haven't seen your request, I've only seen the five-year plan from previous and I don't know how it's changed, but it might be something that you.
The capital committee has not discussed it, they're all, except for myself, they're all fairly new members within the last month or so. What I told the new chairman was that he, as soon as the town meeting was over, he needs to get with Jim and decide, you know, when the town meeting is, for the fall, is going to be, so that they can start backing up and planning when they need to have all the information for the capital, so they can start their process. Again, they're all new. My term ends in June, so.
Yeah, because we're behind the eight ball, we didn't have a capital plan for this town meeting, so not only will they be doing an FY seventeen plan, but they'll be starting in FY eighteen in December, so.
Yeah, and that.
Is that right?
Right.
My year ahead.
Right.
So, I don't know if the, I would take direction from the FinCom in that, that's just my thoughts on it, if you guys want to have a conversation and see what you think you might.
I think I would like to have a conversation with the FinCom probably next Thursday to sit down. You don't have to have a number until that meeting, right?
No, not till town meeting, you know. I'm comfortable either way, because like you said, say the capital plan came with $400,000, we could transfer some out of capital stabilization, some out of free cash, but I just, you know, I just kind of like to be consistent in policy.
One of the things that the capital committee does not have, they, I have, I think, maybe one, possibly two of the capital requests that had come in. I have not seen any of the other capital requests from any of the other departments. So, for them to even start a process and understand it, they would have to have that, all that information. The second is some, they're going to have to have somebody to give them guidance because unfortunately, the entire committee left last year. Again, I was the only one, and I haven't been on the committee in a decade, but I was the only one with any kind of an experience with capital, and I was trying to guide them at least through the special stuff. Still need somebody to do that. If I don't get reappointed, somebody that understands capital needs to help those folks. Plus, we're still short two members, one from this year committee and one from the planning board.
It was nine years, I was one of those people that left it. We'll figure that out, but if you want to just think about putting some in capital stabilization, you think it's a good, but either way, it is safe. You can appropriate it from free cash or from capital stabilization, but just be a thought.
Okay. One last additional thought there is, from a bond rating perspective, it does look good if we are transferring into capital stabilization.
And we are going to be looking at borrowing.
Right.
Long-term, so any little brownie points we can get is a positive.
Thank you.
All right, the rest appear to be bylaws and I don't think you guys.
Yeah, from, from our perspective, we don't usually take a stand one way or the other on any bylaw.
Would anybody like to take a five-minute recess before we go into?
Just a quick question on the ones that we went through, there was a lot of them on flags, is that?
It was drawn. I received a call saying that there was sufficient balance in their fund to do what they needed to do.
It was confusing where it was, it's actually under cemetery, there's a flag revenue account or donation account, so. Would you like a five-minute recess before we dive into the budget? So, I'd like to call recess at seven forty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to call the Towns and Board of Selectmen and FinCom joint meeting back to order at eight PM. So, we left off with the budget article.
Which one do you like to tackle first, hours or the water?
Let's do hours, that's the longest. Jim, do you want to lead us off with this, since this was your work?
I guess, I mean, we've already had the ability to go through, so I would, I defer to Don if he wants to go piece to piece or places that you had, as a group, you had questions or would that be a pleasure?
We went through the budget once, just one time. We've had police, fire, library, highway, yes, we understand their budgets pretty well. If I, we took no votes, I don't have my original sheet, but I don't, I believe that we did any votes on any of these yet, so.
One of the outstanding questions we had was on the stipend for the, what was that article? Oh, yeah, there's an article that's disappeared, never mind, I'm sorry.
Do you want to go through any changes in case you have questions, so people can see, maybe that's a more appropriate?
I, I know that Cindy, Jim and I have had numerous conversations about the additional hours and stuff. I think for the rest of my board, I mean, I've, I've kind of explained it, what the intent was, but I think we should hit those. For most of the, a lot of the others, it's just, we can just go through it. I don't think that we need to take a vote until we get to the end. I don't think it's really necessary to vote on each individual budget.
I don't think there were too many questions on the budget in general when it went over.
No, though I think it was just some, but I think it would help from the perspective for the public to.
We did go through it at our last meeting somewhat and just, and explained the percentages that had, that had gone up overall and also explained about the difficulty the school is going to be in next year and the break they gave us this year, which allowed us to increase in some of the areas.
Which will be non-existent next year.
Well, that's important for people to know.
But if, if it's, this is fair next year, then are we wise to make increases this year so then we have to make decreases next year?
Well, we increased a minimal amount. The reason it looks like it's three percent is because of the additional borrowing under the tax levy for the feasibility study for the school.
One way to, one way to look at it, actually, Andrea, that's, makes it pretty simple is the bottom line has gone up by $464,000, or three percent. Of that, three hundred and sixty-six thousand of it is education, so it's the tech and North Middlesex. Fifty-five of it is health insurance. That means everything else is only an increase of $43,000. So, I mean, while it looks like, when you look at certain lines where there's a note that says increase hours from thirty-five to forty or from twenty to twenty-five, you can get wrapped up pretty easily thinking, well, we should be pulling the brakes on, but this budget actually, absent those two bites, is relatively flat. Moreover, when you look at the, the revenue projection side of the house, those are very conservative numbers. I mean, other available funds and local receipts are lower than they've been in the last four and five years, the projections, so we know that those are artificially low, which we're balanced against, so we expect that there's room there that we'll see that'll generate free cash, which goes again towards the ability to see those same numbers again next year when the school budget kicks back up. Additionally, and this is something that Carolyn kind of put on, on the table for me, is there's money left in fiscal seventeen's levy, so we are not spending in this budget every nickel that's available under Prop two and a half. There's roughly thirty grand or a little over, not great shakes, but it's thirty grand. Shows some restraint that that is there, which means it is not only there, but it will be there again next year.
Well, that actually would be very nice because some year, maybe not too far down in the line, we'll need to go better in two and a half and we will have it there to do it.
Absolutely, and lastly, and lastly, this budget is predicated on $104,000 in new growth projection. The assessors have actually recommended one-twenty. So, there's another, you know, roughly twenty grand on the table there. So, the point I'm making is the revenue is predicted very conservatively, the expenses have only gone up forty-three grand for everything other than the education and the health insurance. Health insurance as a part of negotiation is something we look to wrestle to the ground and make it a little bit better in next year's budget, which will also help.
Not that I don't think it's necessary, mine do, but with the increases in the police department, I would, I'm really pleased with this. I, I would have thought it would be a great deal more.
Sure.
And the idea too behind doing that is to prepare ourselves for the increase in the school next year, instead of being caught as we usually are going, oh, no, you know, we kind of planned it ahead. We know in advance. The Collins Institute will be out shortly too, which is going to benefit us substantially in understanding the future, so.
At no cost for us, which not, but so the public knows that, that we're bringing resources at no cost on taxpayers.
Yeah. So, I don't know, Don, if you don't have any particular questions, we could always put the budget up on the website, yeah?
I can go back to the school, I mean, the library.
Yeah.
I do know that they requested forty hours for the director and thirty-six hours for the children's director, that's the fourteen this time.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Sam. My understanding based on the documents that I received was that the, the ask was for thirty-seven and a half for the director, thirty-five for the children's librarian, and from twenty-five to thirty for the senior library tech, which is what I've got plugged in here.
That's what's in here. Well, I had chat with, heard before, so I went back to confirm that it was forty requested for the director and that they settled for a request of thirty-seven. So, you'll look at column two, which is the requested amount for all of those people at two sixteen and change, and the offered at two oh two and change.
The distinction you also need to be aware of is the requested also had raises built in and the offered, or the TA recommended does not have raises built in, but there are raises covered in the bucket, if you will, in that one oh nine. So, if, if there was a difference being asked for, then this, which is being budgeted, that wasn't conveyed to me and, you know, you, I don't know what you heard when you, you sat down with.
When they looked at, they, they've seen what the hours were that were put in there. What I told them that evening, as well as conversations that I've had with the chairman of the library trustees, was the one thing that was missing that I saw is that there was no plan on paper as to how they were going to, over time, be able to compensate for the additional workload. While this helps them, it doesn't get them to where they need to be, and I understood that. So, what I had requested, and I got that after our meeting this week, is I have a, on paper, what they're looking to do, and I told them that evening, once you put it on paper and we can see where you're planning to get to, because one of the things that is not in here is the fact that they are in desperate need of a, somebody to run the teen side of the, the library. So, they have a youth librarian and they have the main library director, they need somebody to oversee the teen library as well. So, I said, you need to understand that we have budget constraints, and so over a period of time, we can work towards those needs with the, with the FinCom and with the Board of Selectmen, hopefully to get to where you need to be to be able to cover the workload. I think based on what was in here, the impression I got from talking to both Stacy and the chairman was that they were happy with this, understanding that they're going to work towards further things in the future as budgets permit.
My takeaway is that they were pleased with this and everybody in my mind is always working towards the next budget, so that doesn't surprise me that this, this might not be the full enchilada, but it was, it was a meal that they were, they were happy with.
Okay, so if, if there, I thought he raised.
We had two, so that's okay, go ahead, Andrea.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, keep going.
Thank you. If, if they're happy with that, then that means they will pass over that article.
That's my understanding.
Yes.
That's my understanding as well.
All right.
Go ahead, Sam.
Well, I just think, knowing the future, she sent out a, you sent out, didn't you, Don, the library gift, five-year plan?
Yeah.
And yes, there is the need for that, another person that doesn't even exist here. My thoughts are that we need to get these three primary people, especially the two primary people, up to where they need to be and then in the future processes, instead of having in the future, bringing them up and then putting out to a different future, you know, that second, or that, you know, somebody in the teen library, et cetera. The stats that were buried in these books, all these papers here, indicate that the library's use is growing. I'm not a hundred percent concerned about this program and that program, but the personnel that are necessary to just be there with the, with the kids and getting paid justly for their services are definitely these two. I do not know about the third, but bringing her up to thirty is totally an extremely good idea. So, knowing that they were looking at forty and thirty-six and they were willing to settle, that's a different story than, you know, you know, yeah, you want to give me one apple, fine, but it's not, you know, it's still not going to be my family.
Well, too, Sam, you got to look at the growth over the last three, four years too of the library. I mean, it substantially increased over the last three years to the tune of some near eighty thousand dollars. So, it's not like the town hasn't invested in it. And I think while we have a good agreement on the table, I think what would be beneficial for the FinCom and for the taxpayers is over the summer if we actually do some costing of municipal services. And it's a very simple idea to do and you can do comparatives for the community. So, I think that since we have an agreement on the table to push past that even further without looking at all those different things, I don't know what the benefit would be.
Just looking at two people that are very valuable to our community.
And we have, all of our employees are very valuable, our highway, our police, our fire, so, you know.
I know, it's, you know.
I think the one thing, and I hopefully explained it to them well, is that we only have so much money in there. And I, for one, and I know there are other members of the FinCon as well as your board that do not want to get into the practice of taking from free cash to support on-prem costs. That's not good financial business.
No, it's not.
That's why I said that I think that they're, based on my conversations, is they're happy with that. I told them that I would help them, I would work with them to look at where we can go given budget restraints. We always have to look at the budget restraints, getting to where they need to be over a period of time.
Yeah. I think we're all on the same page that way. Does that sound good, Sam?
Hmm.
We'll get there. We'll get there. Everybody will get what they need. There's a plan.
Can I just say something quick?
Yes, sir. Please.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that I would like on our thoughts going into additional hours or resources, that we do a town-wide comprehensive overview, not pitting one department against the other. And also, where we have experts coming in to help us with our budgets and we'll also, over the summer, hopefully, we'll have our collective bargaining and that I would hope that maybe towards a special town meeting in the fall, that if we all work together, we might have a better solution to do this across the board more fairly. And we're going to have to learn to be more efficient, I think we're doing that, but the difference between want and need. And, and, and I'm not going to sit here and advocate for someone personally, but I'll take the highway department and I'm not, just because it's off the top of my head. There used to be 10 employees, they're down to four now. So, I don't know all the facts, but I think if we only do a comprehensive thing, working together, take the facts and growth, but learn the difference between want and need, and also where we have professional people coming in to help us do our budgets, and also, once we get past our collective bargaining, whatever benefits come from that, we're going to have a better picture to be fair to all the employees, but more important, fair to the taxpayers, most value for the dollar. So, I don't want to go on and on here, but at this point, I want to be very, very conservative on any increases in hours until we have a better financial picture, but also personnel picture, that we put some things into place and expertise and the expertise here. And so, I would be against any increases that are actually necessary totally to do the people's business now. So, that's all I'm saying.
And I agree. One of our goals is a personnel staffing plan and hopefully a town administrator will be looking at each department and coming back saying, this is the amount of hours I think that this department needs to be successful.
I don't want to pit one against the other.
And that's the whole point of doing it that way because we have the library coming on and there's no doubt that they need or they feel that they need these hours. But then we also have to look at the highway, Sam. Sam's been understaffed for a long time.
Ten to four is a big...
We need to decide where we want to invest our resources, but you need to do it as a collective entire picture instead of one department over another. So, I think we're all in good shape in this budget. There seems to be consensus for it.
The one, yeah, the one thing that concerned myself and I think members of my committee is that we have a number of employees that are working over and above the hours that they're getting paid for and not being compensated. And they're doing it on a regular basis because it's such a workload to be accomplished. So, I think, based on the conversations that Cindy, Jim and I have had on certain other departments, as long as, as with the library, I think this helps us get to that. I'm not convinced it solves all of the problems yet, but at least we're making an effort to get to where we need to be in order for those employees to be able to do their jobs appropriately.
I have no argument.
It has to be comprehensive.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
So, did anybody want to talk about anything specific in the budget?
No, this is to what he said. One of the things about people working to more hours than they're getting paid, that's a problem's come up off and on over time. And actually, a lot of times, it's just due to inefficient management. And I think once we get things rolling and look at it better and new attitudes, we can work out those, some of those problems the way things are now, with what we have now, it's just by taking a different view, a different balancing of things.
I think that's what a personnel staffing plan will look at, how the different departments can share resources. I mean, right, Don, we know the population's going down, we know our revenues are not going to grow dramatically, so I think looking at it as a whole is, is good.
Madam Chair, just the last thing I'll say, because I'm listening, I'm learning from everyone here, is I think the two key words here is comprehensive and working together. Then all-inclusive, that we all, for the good of the whole, but also working together and thankfully bringing in the right people in the right positions to do the jobs. I think we're starting to make that churn here, where we culture, you know, really qualify people to help us get who we need to be. So, that's all I will say.
I'm going to open it up to my members. Is there any questions that you would have on the budget you had also just for quite some time now? Unfortunately, you're, you're really new to that. I mean, she's only been with us a week. Welcome.
Thank you.
So, I thought maybe it's a good idea, is we'll get this budget since it seems to be consensus stored up online in case folks want to review it and they have any questions prior to the town meeting that we can answer with, if that works.
The warrant should be, I think the warrant is up now. So, you should be able to click the warrant to review it from the comfort of your home on, on the town's website and we'll get the budget document up as well.
I do have a question for the FinCon. I really like giving people at town meeting as much information as possible and I realize it's additional work for Jody, I'll help. Do you think it would be helpful to have the revenue projections and those kinds of things in the town meeting packet? I would really like the whole deal there.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, we haven't done that in the past and I've always wanted to because then people can understand where the money's coming from and we get that online.
Are you going to put a little explanation though on it and what it is?
Well, it has it, Andrea, it has what reported it is. If you look at the budgeted revenues or local receipts, the tax levy...
Yes, yes, I know that, but you know, things like this is, you know, last year or this year or it will affect this.
Well, it shows that, you know, your tax levy, for example, it shows the growth that you've had each year.
Okay, when I've sat in the audience with people, and I agree with you, I know what you're saying, but people look at it and they don't read it like that. They just read hmm, 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 but it doesn't go together to mean anything to them.
That's why you're going to be there to answer their questions.
Madam Chair, I think, go ahead.
No, you.
You were shutting her off.
We're both working on it. I've not yet watched an annual town meeting video.
Oh, please do.
I intend to, to see how budget is rolled out. I mean, honestly, I was surprised that the warrant itself doesn't have some level of detail, even in an omnibus form where it's each department or even, you know, segments, service delivery segments of public safety, public works, post welfare. But my experience is that there's a presentation before the budget article where there's a PowerPoint that shows the revenue projections. So, this is how much money we have, this is why we believe it's safe to project we're going to have this much, and we really believe we're going to have more, but until it's in hand, we don't know, so we're playing it safe. And this is what balances against that and these are the major changes in the budget going forward. And things like, yes, it's a 3% increase of $464,000, but of that, it's really 43 grand for all this other stuff you see. So, my expectation would be that you have that conversation before the vote of the budget. Some people it'll be redundant, but the majority of the people, they're not living it like you are or you are, so it's helpful.
That's what I meant by explain it that way. You've done this long enough. You see it and has in and of itself a meaning, but a lot of people it doesn't.
And I think the more information we can give them, the better to go along with the PowerPoint or explanation that's given, so they have the backup. And it's good for historical purposes. Were you going to say something, Sam? I'm sorry.
Well, to what's been discussed here, I don't remember reading the, at town meeting where we sit down and do the budget, that we don't hit them straight to the budget. What would we do then? This pieces of information here and on the pages before and after that page, yeah, they have to dig the find. Like you said, what kind of money do we have? We've got $20 million coming in, we're asking to spend $19 million. Hey, here's a million left over. Well, or $100,000 left over, or $10 dollars left over. But nonetheless, this numbers, these budgets that could go through article after article after article, department after department, department all the way down the list, for however many hours it took to do it each year. And then we come up to the bottom line and, you know, like we gave a extra $20,000 last year to somebody that requested, we said no. And with what is being spent against, the average person doesn't really know. This is really explanatory here. It's really nice to take time when I'm not having to listen to y'all and go over it. I've got numbers that say, hey, we got the money to pay for these things.
Exactly, yeah.
But last year, we didn't have the money. I don't know we didn't. I mean, put it that way, I don't know the year before.
We didn't have the backup available for folks and I think that this year that's, that's been resolved. And I hope to even strive to give even more information next year with the Collins Institute coming out to do a budget document. So, I think we're on the same page there, Sam. The only thing that I did want to say is generally, and he's going to talk to the moderator at the last conversation we had, we usually vote the budget, general government, public safety, culture, recreation. Do you still want to be consistent in that in past practice or?
I would say that, yes, we would want to do that way.
Yeah, because that's the only thing I can see here.
The one thing that I kind of like that Jim's doing this year, and I don't recall if we have, we have done it this way before, but some of the funds that are paying for some of the operating expenses are actually listed here and not in separate articles.
Yes. Yeah, no, I think this is, more information the better. I think this is really good.
Madam Chair, in the conversation with the Collins Institute just today, obviously it's not going to take place for this cycle, but moving forward, it's a term, and I don't mean disparagingly to say this, but oftentimes the Crayola-ization of these documents, colors, simplicity resonates. And there's a tool that I've used in the past that is literally a depiction of the dollar bill and it is sliced up showing of the money that comes in. This much of the dollar bill comes from taxation, this much from other available. And then on the expense side, and it's one page and it's graphical, but you can see, wow, education is 52% of every dollar that we have locally to spend. It just gives another opportunity for people to look at it in a way that might resonate with them, but this stuff doesn't. I mean, you may eat and breathe this, seven out of 10 people don't. So, I hope, you know, for whatever the Collins Institute rolls out for the town for next year, there's another bite at it that I think breaks it into that kind of Crayola level.
I agree.
Chinese level.
Okay, so, go ahead, Don, I'm sorry.
We have not taken a vote on this yet.
Okay.
I think unless my board, my committee members have other questions, I think we could probably take a vote on this, if you would like.
Go right ahead. And we're going to do it Tuesday night.
There, did you make, did you make this one? Hit me on the...
Are we voting on the whole budget?
Yes, the whole Article 5, whole budget.
Okay. All right. Make a motion to accept or recommend Article 5.
Just, just a clarification for folks, it's $19,808.727.
Actually, a little less than that on the most recent version that you should have seen, which is 19, 795, 521 and 16 cents. That's the, of the initial hours were added in for...
We'll change the motion.
Wobbling, well, what happened? I don't know how to shut it off.
We'll change the number on the motion now.
It's in the box. There is. Nineteen...
I have been given orders. I'm not answering, but I've been given orders.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Well, on that note, I'd be remiss to, to not thank Don Klein and Jim Carla and Cindy King who were part of the working group that helped with the development of this. I know, we're going, but I just, I just thought I wanted to thank you first. So, we're good with the budget article. Let's move on to the water department article. And what is the dollar amount on that? Okay, to save the town, we'll vote to appropriate the sum of $856,813.71. To operate the water department for fiscal year 2017, and that's $667,422 of this sum come from water enterprise fund revenues in order to fund the cost of intermunicipal expenses, that $189,071.71 of this sum be appropriated in the general fund and funded from enterprise revenues or take any other action in relation there too.
We did vote on this already and we're recommending it.
Okay. I had a question on the on-call being put into the salary line item for the superintendent. Did you guys discuss that? Because he's on the matrix.
He's in the union though, I thought, now.
That's why I was questioning why that was wrapped in there, because he would have to go into negotiations, right?
Because we'd be doing that tool off the budget process for the oppositions, right?
Yeah, so if you look at his FY '16 salary, it was $73,900 and it went up to $80,305. Did you guys discuss that?
No, we talked about union and we let it go at that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I don't understand what that, what that is, so I, that's the only question that I had on the water budget.
Mr. Cradish reflecting right now.
No, I mean, my understanding is that this is the budget as voted by the water commissioners, which is why, in deference to their elected capacity, I put this document together on the table.
Oh, sure.
Having spoken, right, having spoken with Paul, it was his contention to me that he had an issue last year that was raised about his on-call pay, that there was an ethics ruling of some sort that he took to indicate that on-call pay should be rolled into his base number, which is what he proposed and the commissioners adopted, which is why it's here.
And that's fine to put on there, requested, but he's on the matrix, so it really has to be broken out as on-call time. I mean, you're guaranteeing him that many hours of on-call. It's supposed to be something that he fills in when his water tax can't, from what I understand.
And I don't know.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I used to refer...
There's a memorandum of agreement that...
That's only good for one year, so he would have to renew it with the board.
Which he doesn't now because he's in the union.
Right, what I'm trying to say is, so a fact that would work because it's going to expire, and so effectively he has to go through negotiations.
Well, I think there has to be a lump sum because he does do on-call time. He does take, you know, and he has a section 19 waiver.
We, we took it as the elected board approved it and it was just more of a courtesy to us.
Well, you're wrapping on-call time into his salary. But that's inclusive. I mean, on-call is part of his daily duties, right?
Well, it's supposed, he's supposed to be scheduled. His water tax alternate with him. So, what are you, what are you balancing the on-call time for? How many on-call you...
That's not up to us to determine.
It is when it's in his salary.
But we're not the elected board.
He's on the matrix and now he's going into the union and you've, in the salary.
But they've got another elected board that submitted this...
No, I'm not arguing. I'm not arguing elected board.
No, but that's the numbers coming from the elected, the water commissioners, which are another, an electoral board.
But are they fully, sometimes the water department doesn't communicate well with the, with one another. Do they, do they understand the breakout in what the union would actually have control over with him or not? I mean, it's such a basic thing, this, the union is so new, I don't know if they, they are just recommending a salary and then he goes for a union raise from there? Or they're just recommending what if he wasn't union involved, that's where he should be? I just didn't understand.
I think that's all, from my perspective, that's all open to negotiations under the union, so.
That's, that's what I, and obviously, we wouldn't touch their budget, that's what they're asking for.
Exactly.
We would just be touching what we're recommending. I just think it needs to be broken out.
I mean, part of the issue that's, that's troubling about this budget is we have some things that were in effect... things that were in effect prior to the union materializing. And, for instance, you know, Mark Mercurio was granted additional hours. That happened well before the union became an issue. So now that the union is an issue, that is his new baseline. So anything that he needs above and beyond that goes through negotiation. I'm not clear where this issue fits in that timeline. Is it something that should have been the new base prior to the union, or is it something that is in the middle of it all, which means it should be held aside and negotiated as a part of the union deal? I don't know. I wasn't here.
Well, he takes the on-call time. He gets paid $150 a week. There was a Section 19 issue, so we gave him a Section 19 waiver and a memorandum of understanding that Labor Council had put together in order for him to draw that. It's not part of the salary. It's the water commissioner's supposed to schedule the on-call time. So first week, maybe Mike does it, then Jim does it, then maybe Paul will do it. But it's not a guarantee of salary, it's to cover when he's on-call. So to take a set amount and wrap it into a salary, doesn't make any sense to me, and I would need to review the memorandum of understanding, too. I don't recall exactly what it said, but we did address that specifically. So however that's written, is how it should be done now, and then going into negotiations.
And now that he's a union person, he's going to have to be consistent with his other union members.
Well, I'm sure he'll be covered for his on-call time, but it shouldn't be part of a salary, it should be broken out.
Unless that's negotiated to be the case, that on average, he does this many calls, which is this nut, and it gets put on the base.
That's a negotiation point.
Right.
So that's the only question I had.
His board should have reviewed it, and it was their recommendation of...
Well, actually, the selectmen are the ones that had to go into the agreement with him, not his elected board. They didn't have authority to do that.
And they have been doing, well, we don't get that, but they have been doing it, and there was questions that we straightened up.
Yeah, we are actually his appointing authority, and we had to sign the memorandum of agreement with him. The water commissioners control the money, not the personnel.
And you had to grant the 19.
Yes, and we had to grant the 19. So, however this works out, it has to be consistent with the agreement that's now in place, subject to negotiations with the union.
I would say Jim probably should have had a conversation with him, but from a bottom-line number, I don't think that...
No, I don't have any problem with the bottom line.
It's just how you...
Just how it's broken out, his salary should be, his salary and his on-call should be his on-call. You're wrapping, unless you said you negotiated into a new contract, because you're...
Which ultimately is your prerogative as a board.
Yeah. That was the only question I had on that one. I didn't have any problem with the bottom line either, Don, because it's consistent with what he was paid. Well, folks, that wasn't too bad, two and a half hours.
The only thing that I would ask Jim is to help us with our thoughts of what should be in place in this two stabilization accounts, is after all these articles, how much free cash we really are going to have.
I guess I could have read it to you, handing it to you.
Starting out with a, I'll give you this, but starting out with a million, $2,967 in free cash, if you hit all of the articles that the warrant indicates are free cash, and they all passed, and the ones that aren't identified as having a funding source, so the library's $26,000, doesn't have a funding source, if it passed and was free cash, obviously it impacts this. But there's 319, 948, 08 left. I just threw that together quickly.
You can have that, Don, because I can get another one tomorrow.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
He actually did, the one that was attached to his budget, I have it, I just didn't think he printed it out.
Yeah, I actually pulled it out of that packet, because I didn't have the corresponding one for stabilization, and then we had these articles that could impact that, and I didn't want it to seem like it was dried in ink, when there was still the possibility that somebody could change it.
Any other questions? Well, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Jim, I want to get a T-shirt made that says "One More Thing." But I just, I'm trying to make...
Which means three more.
Yes. We're being honest.
Well, once one starts, it'll go.
I promise you, you won't want that. I'll make it quick here. Carolyn touched on it earlier before about thanking the finance committee, because people, I think, out there don't really know how much work goes into this. And Jim, the rest of the board here, thank you for being honest, great job. But this hasn't been a normal year, and I think we need to recognize the town accountant and the tax, and it was a total team effort. It was a normal thing, I mean, just normal. Hopefully, we never had to go for that again, and all these people here, we're lucky to have them in town, so we have some really hard work, and Mr. Kravis has been, I'll still call him by Bill Belichick, and, but I just think we're doing good stuff together, so I want to thank you sincerely, from the people of the town, because, you know, you don't get paid for this, and we all sometimes all realize twice out of coming here how much work you do. So I just think it's necessary to recognize all of them, so thank you for that.
And I would like to thank my board, as well as Jim and Cindy, that the work group actually was very helpful, given the very short cycle we had to get through. And I hope that next year, we have a little bit longer time.
And again, what kind of work you do when you stress is only an indication of how great we can do down the road, so...
I'd love to return back to the times where we, the budgets were in in December, and you were having your budget, you know, that's your municipal calendar. Unfortunately, without being able to close the books, we were all kind of held hostage until, you know, that came forward, so I think a lot of work's been done in a short period of time, and we're in pretty good shape. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Second one?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Aye. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.